Hi, I'm Robin Schultz with the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
Good evening. Oh, wow. Your sister's here. Good evening and welcome to our Monday July 18th meeting of Hoover City Council. I'll call the team to order and ask the person to help.
Council President Lida?
Here.
Council Pro Tempozy?
Here.
Council Member Sweeney?
Here.
Council Member Driver?
Here.
Council Member Murphy?
Present.
Council Member Middlebrooks?
Here.
Council Member McClain?
Before I'm present, we will proceed. Everyone will please rise to their attention and remain standing for your place.
Hello, everyone. Dear my father, we just thank you for today and we thank you for listening to us. We just thank you for looking out for our city and all the citizens and neighbors of Jesus Christ. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I urge the audience to vote in favor or to recite the mission of the president. Well, good evening. This is part of our council meeting. We'd like to recognize some boys that have given a great deal of service to our city. And tonight, we want to recognize Jeremy, better known as Colin Farron. Colin, come on up. Colin began his career with the city in July of 2005 as a parking wreck assistant and was promoted to a park patrol officer in 2007. He was transferred on July 19th, 2021, as our animal control officer with the Hoover Police Department. And as the control officer handles a wide range of animal-related service calls throughout the city. We talked a little bit about that before he came up, and he's been called out to search for wallaby. He has been called out to search for alligators and in the Greystone area, bears. And we have pictures and footprint or paw print to confirm that they're really out there. And most importantly, it's not just going after our little puppy dogs that have gotten out. And of course, when he sees a puppy dog and one of our beloved animals, he takes tender love and care with capturing them and doing the best he can to get them back to their owners and just a great job. But he's really a very helpful and a kind and patient man dealing with our citizens because oftentimes you are dealing with mostly pets that people have allowed to get out and maybe do some things that they shouldn't. But so it takes a person that really knows how to work with our citizens and just to kind of get them everything back into the normal situation. Colin also operates at our SEC baseball tournament or any high-profile, high-traffic types of events in the Assistant Police Department with traffic control and just other areas that we may need him. So I'm so grateful for Colin's 20 years of service. This is how he is most of the time, got a big smile on his face, and we're grateful and congratulations on your 20 years. Thank you. We'll go begin first with an item on our regular agenda before we get to the consent agenda. We'll turn to regular agenda before we can, but item number one, Resolution Number 8525-25.
8531-25.
8525-25?
8531-25.
I'm sorry. This actually renames the community room to the Fay Anderson Community Room in recognition of Mrs. Anderson's outstanding service and contributions to the city.
Mr. President, I would like to approve a resolution number 8531-25.
Second. A motion and second for approval. Council Murphy, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today at 5:30, we honor Fay Alexander Fay Bloodworth Anderson's commitment to Hoover by naming the community room after her and her family, also friends came. She was born in Nashville, Tennessee, May 6th, 1941, and we lost a trailblazer in December 20th, 2024. She was the first female council member that served between 1984 and 88. She spearheaded an effort to start Hoover City School that we love so dearly today. In 2017, Fay recorded a video for the Hoover Historical Society's celebration of the 50 year anniversary, and we'd like to show that right now.
I'm Fay Anderson. I worked at Hoover in 1971, got active in the community, and asked the Hoover Inc. Lord if I could form the Hoover Bells in 1979. We started with 12 young girls. We outfitted them out of 959 closet of hoop skirts and the UAB theater closet, so they would all have hoop skirts. They were presented at the Hoover Mall. There was a water fountain with a little bridge on it, and so we walked across the bridge and felt a little nosegay. They had more fun. In those days, we had an Isaiah Trail, and they stood at the houses and they directed traffic and they waved to the crowds during the time. But they were the official Hoover Bells and city custodians. Later, I was lucky enough to be on the Hoover City Council between 84 and 88 during the formation of a Hoover scoop system, a park board. I watched the Galleria go up, and I like to tell everyone Hoover's one of the finest places in the South to live. I want to tell you, our administration, our fire department, police department, scoop system, library, and every board we have is just ideal. I invite you to come to Hoover, visit us, live with us, shop here and eat here, great restaurants too. I have enjoyed watching this city grow and being a citizen of this, and I am so excited about building the community together.
At this time, I invite Beth and Hillary Borsette and family to come to front here. Do you mind taking a photo? I'm also the artist. You sure can.
Yeah. So I'm going to say a few things before we take a photo. I do, if someone will mention Colin, I have a really funny raccoon story that happened while Mom was on city council that I will share with him at some point if he will give me a call. And I do think it is so nice that he was honored here tonight because the Parks and Rec, the Hoover Parks and Recreation Board was one of the initiatives that Mom founded when she was on city council. So I think that the tie into that is a lovely, is a lovely fit. So we are so grateful for the life of Fay Anderson. We're grateful for her commitment to Hoover and its residents. We're grateful that so many of the legacy projects that she initiated and helped champion still continue to exist, and I think that's in large part due to the leadership that all you exhibit on a day-to-day basis. So we're grateful to Derek for spearheading this idea and the mayor and the council people for making it a reality. And Ellen was a tremendous help. I don't know if she's in the room anymore, but thank you Ellen too. Mom loved Hoover. Mom loved Hoover's citizens, and you couldn't have a conversation with her ever without that being fully evident. And Mom's work for Hoover began long before she served on city council, and Mom's work for Hoover lasted a long time after she served on city council. And having a community space where citizens can gather, named for her, is the ultimate way to recognize and celebrate Fay's legacy and her lifetime commitment at the city of Hoover. And so made a dedicated space, named in her memory, long via Get Right Space, where citizens encourage, nurture, and facilitate connections and community because that was incredibly important to Mom. Thank you for the honor and thank you for all you all continue to do for the city of Hoover. Thank you for making Hoover a great place to live and to work.
Yes.
And wait, we'll be talking real quickly. So you will all, when this is over, peek through the community ring that's named in her honor. Lynetta Nix is the artist that did the portrait, and she really captured Mom beautifully, and she also captured Mom's legacy for the city of Hoover beautifully. If you look in all the frames and the paintings that are behind her or a lot of the legacy projects that she spearheaded for the city of Hoover, so thank you, Lynetta.
We have a motion and second for approval of the resolution. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Yes, have it. Motion carries. We'll now move to our consent agenda. Items two through 13 are presented as consent items. It will be read at one, with one reading, with one motion and vote unless of course a member of the body or a member of the public is liking the item removed. Anybody who's willing to tip the body? Anyone liking the item removed from the consent?
Mr. President, just clarify, two through seven or two through nine.
I'm sorry, two through nine. Yes. Thank you for the clarification. Do you want the public here to speak about item two through nine? Seeing none? Just add this up, you're reading out.
Item number two approves the payment of bills. Item number three approves the minutes from July 10th, 2025 work session and the July 14th, 2025 city council meeting. Item number four is Resolution 8525-25 that approves a 160 special retail alcohol license for AU&amp; Hoover who is doing business as the Hampton Inn and Suites. Item number five, Resolution Number 8526-25 authorizes the mayor to execute a court pre-borough officer contract with the administrative director of courts on behalf of the city. Item number six is Resolution Number 8527-25 that amends the fiscal year budget for the year ending September 30th, 2025 to reflect certain personnel adjustments in the municipal court department. Item number seven, Resolution Number 8528-25 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Johnson Controls and any other documents necessary for the effectuation of set agreement for maintenance on HVAC units at city-owned properties for the city's 2526 fiscal year. Item number eight is Resolution Number 8529-25 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with NOCS Pest Control for pest control services at various city properties for the city's 2526 fiscal year. Item number nine is Resolution 8530-25 that authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Trane USAE for HVAC quarter rate and annual inspections for the 2526 fiscal year.
Mr. President, I would like to approve the consent agenda. Second. A motion and second for approval. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, say nay? Yes, have it. Motion carries. We'll now move to the regular agenda. The meeting will last until 10:00. Resolution Number 6532-25, understand?
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Alabama Department of Revenue for office space shown in the resolution.
Mr. President, I would like to approve the resolution number 8530-25. Second. A motion and second for approval. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, sir.
Sir.
So I went back the other night and watched the work session of the original Riverwalk agreement. So in November of 2023, council approved the Riverwalk agreement. During the discussion, corporate realty said anticipates 93% occupancy by year four. Staff got up and then discussed the desperate need for space for relocation of city departments to this fourth floor. Fast forward to July 2024, according to a Fox 6 article I read, the city of Hoover hopes to have a healthcare provider identified by the end of 2024. September 2024, the C O N got approved. October 2024, request for proposals to the healthcare authority from healthcare providers, deadline, October 2024. My understanding is, is that the C O N, when approved, gave a deadline for a healthcare provider to be named by November of this year. We're about 90 days out, and I think that this body and our public deserves to hear from someone with the healthcare authority and Mr. Simon on an update on where we stand. I'm concerned that healthcare provider hasn't been named yet, but I'm hopeful that we're very close. Admittedly, this agreement with outdoor is not under the best circumstances for the city. However, it is essential to move outdoor from their current location in order to proceed with expansion for MCFI. On top of that, you know, the lease agreement is kind of in their favor the first two years, and then it becomes more in the city's favor. But we weren't holding any cards for negotiation, so Mr. Miller, I commend you for the, for giving the best out of the bad deal. And hopefully that income will help soften the blow of what we're currently under with Riverwalk in terms of financial responsibility. Like I said, admittedly, it's not the best ideal situation, but I think it's one that we need to look forward to. But I would like an update at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Middlebrooks. That was a very genuine and correct overview, and I remember how this all came about with Riverwalk, particularly the C O N period. People listened to it online, and Mr. Lida, I know it was your personal priority according to your testimony. Mayor, you said it was so important, you didn't read any of the documents. You had no idea what was in the C O N or what was in any of the leases, and that probably has something to do with where we are today. And I agree with you, it's not a great deal, but I think it's worse than that. It's desperation, and the city does not need to take desperate action with public dollars on the line. There are all sorts of problems with this, and council members have to put their foot down and stop this at some point. They've got to stop the bleeding. Let's start with why the revenue department would be looking at this building to begin with. They're required by law to do this through a competitive bid process. So Donald is in a fair deal for it. It's the cheapest deal in the city by law, and there's no lack of empty office space in Birmingham, Mar, Hoover. And you don't really even need a calculator to figure out that the city of Hoover, with our tax dollars, will be subsidizing the state revenue department. We're paying more in leasing this empty floor of the Riverwalk building than they would be paying in rent. Plus, if you look back at the, there was a 2013 deal was the last time the revenue department expanded their property. They covered the cost of renovating it and all these things. Well, in this situation, Hoover is going to pay to fix the office project of the building, and that's just unheard of. This has got to stop. Clearly, I don't know if it's the developer who's continuing to benefit so strongly off this, but there is something fundamentally wrong with what's going on at Riverwalk, and at some point, everybody has to stand up and stop this. And I think this is a good place to begin. And I'll add one more thing about why this will probably, why it should be stopped now, although I'm not sure it'll go forward anyway. I've read, Mayor, you may not have read it, but I've read the master lease. There is a requirement in there of how much per square foot that prop, the building has to be rented for. Well, if you look online of the developer's company, Barbara Simon's company, he's advertising the space in that building far below the mandated rate. Is that, you know, it's a legal agreement.
Mr. Thomas, you're right.
Thank you. KT Thomas, Scott Creek. No, that's not it. Scott Creek. I'm Amy Ennats, Mom. I was corrected this summer rather by my daughter. I'm trying to understand the urgency and the rationale for this resolution. So I went back, as Dr. Middlebrooks did, and saw that December 5th, 2022, the council bought 3021 Lorna Road for about $2 million with the purpose of moving the fire administration, Chief Bentley, to that facility to free up space for the forensic institute. The purchase was pushed through in less than two hours because the work session is right before the council meeting, and then the city has since allocated a million or so dollars for renovation of 3021 Lorna Road. That building is empty and has been sitting empty for quite a long time. Less than a year later than November of '23, the city council approved Riverwalk. Again, the city stated the purpose was to free up space for the forensic institute. That made poor Lorna Road going from Cinderella to the ugly stepsister. You all agreed to $16 million in cash paid over 10 years, and I'm not sure what's going on here because the other thing that was reported at the same time was that the city was going to rent, it was the first floor, but it could have been at the fourth floor, for $700,000 for 10 years, except one year would be free, so it's only nine years. Dr. Middlebrooks and Mr. Sweeney voted against Riverwalk. The council, though, in your defense, thought that there was $80 million in reserves, so they thought there was plenty of money. Don't worry about it. At this point, though, it should be obvious that the council does not always get accurate information from the city, whether it's here or back there. Since then, they're spending over $1 million in legal fees, and the next, one of the next resolutions is $100,000 to put into a building that we rent. We put no money into a building that we own. So we have, I think as residents, we have the right to have our information, and we should know what the plan is for the building, as Dr. Middlebrooks said. How much has been rented, that it's not rented by the city, how many clients are there going to be, and a more realistic picture of how much we're spending each year on something that looks like a giant black hole.
Matt Winter, Scott Creek. I don't really have any prepared statement here, but I do just want to echo what was just said, which is, the council has gotten what appears to be some pretty incomplete information in the past that's just been talked about, has been talked about in the past. How is the council sure that you're getting complete information now about what the options are? That's what I think you should really consider at this moment. Just my own two cents, and I don't know enough about it to really know, but Alabama Department of Revenue seems like it would be a much better fit for that 3021 Lorna Road building than a building intended for medical use. My understanding of why that's not an option is because that Lorna Road building is such a disaster, it's going to cost millions to fix. I guess I understand that we don't want to spend millions to fix the building that we're going to rent for a lot. Frankly, I don't even understand why we're in the landlord business at all with Alabama Department of Revenue. I guess there was always money to be made, it's all coming out of that, and now we're trying to figure out what to do there. But I really would like to see the council really reflect on, I understand that this may be the best option to get out of a bad situation, but we all need to understand, all of us need to understand, not just the economy thrown out there that this is what we have to do and we don't talk about it. Thanks.
Any other comments? We have a motion and second for approval. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, say nay? Yes, have it. Motion carries. Item number 11, this is Resolution Number 8533-25, understand?
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025 to reallocate funds for the Alabama Department of Revenue build out at Riverwalk Building.
Mr. President, I would like to approve the resolution number 8533-25. Second. A motion and second for approval. Any comments in the bottom?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So in an effort to promote transparency for this council and future councils, I just want to say while discussing the reallocation of funds for the 3021 building with city staff, it was mentioned in a meeting that I attended that there was a familial connection between the owner of this property, the 3021 building that the city purchased in 2022, and our law firm.
Yes.
Yes.
We thought it prudent to request further information, which ultimately showed no conflict of interest existed. A thorough conflict check was conducted in accordance with the Alabama Bar Rules prior to the commencement of closing proceedings. I want to emphasize that I'm sharing this not to disparage anyone or imply any wrongdoing whatsoever, but to avoid any misinformation and to be transparent with our community.
Any other comments in the bottom?
Just one comment. We probably should just work on the informational disclosure document just in the future, regardless if it's illegal or not, or approval, like a checklist, and so we'll be able to kind of hang that out front. Some of that is a recommendation from legal, as we need consulting that we have just to make sure that I have a non-disclosure agreement. Do we have that? I want to put you on the spot if you need to kind of research. Do we have that now in the contracts, non-disclosure agreements?
I'm not sure what you're asking, but I'm, you know, we can surely talk about it afterwards.
Okay. And what I'm asking is typically in contracts you'll have, do you have any disclosure to disclose about whether you have family members? There's nothing for the job that they work here. So regardless of if there's a conflict or not, like Councilman Middlebrooks just stated, no wrongdoing was done, it's just kind of informational purposes regardless of the fact. Maybe we can expand on that on those contracts, especially builder consultants, but we can talk in the future. I just want to kind of make a point on that few subjects.
Any other comments in the bottom? Any comments from the public on the resolution?
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to say that I appreciate you bringing that up, that there was some investigation about that relationship at some point. It sounds like I've been on the first. Sounds like night management on the purchase. It'd be a lot better if they just put that out when it was done, so that it didn't have to sit there and fester as a question to the public, because it is a question to the public, which is heard. The real reason I want to talk about this one is it deserves the same treatment as Riverwalk. Like, the city has made an investment in the building, a substantial investment. It was stated earlier that there was an hour of deliberation, there really wasn't. It was about 10 minutes of actual council time that was discussed in the meeting before, so the work session and then the actual city council meeting. And that building was purchased for nearly $2 million value. And now it seems, it seems from my perspective like we don't have a plan for it, that we're about to abandon all money to do anything with it. Now, I don't know what the plan is, and it would be great to hear about that. It'd be great to hear what the plan is, just so our minds are all a little easier. This is going to be a great lesson for the city. And if there's not a plan presented, then I guess I'll just assume there's no plan.
Thank you, Paul Henry, Middlebrook. I guess we could go ahead and rename this Mayor Mercado's Vision Land, because that's what it's trending into. And in all seriousness, a point was raised that it seems to be the consensus of everyone I've talked to that the city and the leadership of this council has not been upfront with the members of the council. I think you have gotten bad numbers and bad information. Bad, I think. You're very good people and you try to do a good job, but at some point, that's not going to be a justifiable excuse anymore. We've all raised this issue, we know there's problems. Um, there is, uh, you know, no one trips over the Grand Canyon, the trip over cracks in the sidewalk. The red flags are there, and you either have to take responsibility for letting the train go forward or stop and bring in some accountability. And I think accountability and transparency is what the majority of you would like, and I hope we'll see a way clear to do that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other comments in the body? A motion second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Item 12, resolution number 8534 dash 25, standing.
Should it be item number 13?
8534 dash 25 amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025 for janitorial services associated with the outdoor relocation to the Riverwalk Building.
Mr. President, we for approval, resolution number 8534 dash 25.
Second.
And a motion for approval for, or motion second for approval. Do you have any questions, comments in the body? Anything from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Item 13, resolution number 8535 dash 25, standing.
This res- resolution amends the budget for the, the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025 for the Riverchase Village drainage project.
Mr. President, we for approval, resolution 8535 dash 25.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. President. A minute ago, you asked about a plan for this building, and, uh, I want to thank all of my fellow council members. I believe you received an email in June from the mayor about the possibility of using a portion of the 3021 building for, for visual arts, for visual classrooms, for visual art, um, uh, workspaces, uh, maker space, those kind of things. And that was talked about in the last two Arts Council meetings, of which I chaired, and a lot of excitement was behind that. There was a survey sent out, we've got several, several artists that are interested in that space now. Uh, but I commend you for not taking every penny away from that building because that is a plausible use and a source of revenue in terms of subleases for that building. Or, and again, this would come to the next council, not necessarily us, or that money can be used to rehabilitate the building and sell it. But I do feel like, and I'm glad that all of you agree, it would not be wise to take every penny away from that building because there needs to be a, a plan for that building. This is a possible plan, there are other possible plans, but if you take all the funding away, then you don't have the means to go and do some work to, to make it usable for one entity or another entity or to sell, so thank you for that.
Any other comments? Comments from the public, item 13?
Yes, sir. Paul Henry, Middlebrook. Mr. Middlebrook, uh, uh, Middlebrook, Mr. Middlebrook. I just had a question because I wasn't that familiar with the questions of a conflict. What is the conflict with the law firm in this building? Is it the ownership or?
The ownership of the building and the partner of the law firm was first instance.
Current partner.
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
I appreciate you answering my question.
My thought on this, uh, taking money, which, you know, I'm all about some, so it's not like I don't want to see the project dealt with down on 150 and 31. But I don't really understand why we're in such a hurry to amend the budget when we don't even have bids. We don't even really know what this project's really going to cost on 31 and 150. So it seems to me there doesn't have to be a rush to get this money moved over. On the other hand, move it over and we don't have anything or not much left for Lorna Road Building. But the question at the end of the day is, well, the plan, like, how is all of this being planned out and is it being planned out? Or is this, I mean, this just looks like we're moving shells around with money and nobody really knows what's going on. It just feels like there's zero plan and you all are getting handed something sort of last minute and desperation, and that doesn't seem fair to anyone.
Mr. President, come in.
Sir.
Mr. Benjamin, in order for us to release the bid, which we're saying we're going to pay this amount for this bid, we need to first allocate the funds for the bid. If we release the bid without any funds associated with it, we're not necessarily committed to bid, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other comments in the body? You have a motion second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. We'll now move to some public hearings, most of the weeds and grass, each of these, they'll have a public hearing, we'll be taking time from the public, Mr. Martin's here to update us on a few of these, and if you have been taken care of and we will withdraw, item 14, resolution number 8536 dash 25, if you have changed your taken care of.
Yes, sir, that's correct. The location 22 over 8 Larksford Drive has been cut.
Motion to withdraw.
Mr. President, I move to withdraw, resolution number 8536 dash 25.
Second. A motion second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Item 15, resolution number 8537 dash 25, standing.
This resolution declares a weed and other vegetation nuisance and directs the abatement of, of what said nuisance pursuant to Alabama law for the property located at 2236 Partridge Lane.
Mr. President, we for approval, resolution number 8537 dash 25.
Second.
Have a motion and second for approval. We will open the public hearing. Mr. Martin, any updates from Thursday?
Yes, sir. Uh, there has been some traction with this particular property. Uh, the front yard does appear to have been dressed, however, the backyard is still overgrown, largely untouched, and that is the reason why we have kept this item on the agenda. Uh, I do have an update beyond that. Uh, code enforcement did receive a call from the owner today. Uh, their intention is to address the rear yard as well. Uh, we are asking that the council go ahead with the nuisance declaration, uh, just so if the owner does not comply and cut the property, uh, we at least don't have to start completely over with the process. Uh, but there is positive news about this location that seems that they're trending in the right direction.
Very good, good news, and we'll hope over the next two weeks before abatement, we get this one cleared up. Any comments or questions in the body? Anyone from the public here to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, we have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Item 16, resolution number 8538 dash 25, standing.
This resolution declares a, a weed and other vegetation nuisance and directs the abatement of, of said nuisance for property located at 2874 Whistieri Drive.
Mr. President, we for approval, resolution 8538 dash 25.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. We have a public hearing. Mr. Martin, any other comments?
Yes, sir. As of today, uh, nuisance is still persistent on the property.
Any new questions, comments in the body? Anyone from the public here, sir? Hearing, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Item 17, resolution number 8539 dash 25, standing.
This, this res- resolution declares a, a weed and other vegetation nuisance and directs the abatement of nuisance at 3501 Laurel Field Lane.
Mr. President, we for approval, resolution number 8539 dash 25.
Second.
Have a motion and second for approval. Mr. Martin, any?
Yes, sir. As of today, it looks like somebody started the job, uh, but, uh, as, right now, remains incomplete, so the property is still considered a nuisance by city code. It's another one we hope to get, uh, resolved before we get to the abatement period.
Very good. Any questions, comments? Any comments from the public, Mr. President? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item 18, resolution number 8501 dash 25, standing.
This res- resolution authorizes the abatement of weeds or other vegetation at 1301 Darius Street.
Mr. President, we for approval, resolution number 8501 dash 25.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Martin?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, this particular case, uh, we have another instance of somebody beginning the job. Uh, there is a rough cut that has taken place on the site. Uh, we still find that it is outside of compliance with our grass and weed ordinance. Uh, we would like to proceed with declaration for the abatement or approval of the abatement by council, uh, and wish to consider, uh, continuing working with the property owner, hopefully that they'll finish the job before we get to the point where we are actually abating it.
Very good. Any questions, comments in the body?
Mr. President, I know this is a before. Uh, a question for you, legal. Can you, can we find an opinion on whether or not we can group these into withdrawals versus the ones that we're going to eventually approve? Uh, because at the end of the day, we were talking about, talking about the addresses and voting it to be a nuisance or not. Can we just find some, uh, the legal opinion, uh, from the state or page law associated, whether or not we, I don't want to have to go through these individual, about 20 of them, especially during the summertime, they can get rather interesting. You can research that and come back later, and that's perfectly fine. I just want to make sure someone has that.
And these, you know, two or actually three of these would have had a public, public hearing, so you could not have actually grouped those, but, you know, the other ones, yes.
That'd be perfect, because during the summertime, that's when it rains and grows. Thank you.
Good. Anyone from the public here to speak on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Item 19, resolution number 8502 dash 25, we understand this one has been corrected.
Yes, sir. Uh, 3460 Sheila Drive has been cut to the satisfaction of code enforcement and can be removed from the agenda.
We will understand motion for withdrawal.
Mr. President, we move to draw, resolution number 8502 dash 25.
Second.
A motion and second for withdrawal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Item number 20, this is ordinance number 25 dash 2678.
This ordinance alters, pre-ag ranges and extends the corporate limits of the city to embrace certain, certain, certain territory located at 3721 South Shakespeare.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance number 25 dash 2678.
Second.
A motion and second for adoption. Any questions, comments in the body? Anyone from the public here to speak on the ordinance? Seeing none. Federal clerk, just hold on.
Counselor crazy?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Driver? Aye. Counselor Murphy?
Aye.
Counselor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Counselor Lyler?
Aye. Item 6009, the motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. We will now have four first readings, this is item number 21, both will be taken on these, but they will be considered with our next regular schedule, leaving the resolution number 8522 dash 25 standing.
This res- res- resolution authorizes the abatement of such weed and other vegetation at 425 Shades Avenue.
Item 22, resolution number 8523 dash 25, standing.
This res- res- resolution authorizes the, the abatement of light weeds at 2413 Regent Circle.
Item 23, is resolution number 8524 dash 25.
This res- res- resolution authorizes the abatements of light weeds at 3456 Blueberry Lane.
Item 24, ordinance number 25 dash 2675.
This, this, this ordinance amends ordinance number 260, 263, to rezone the, the property located at 2240 Chapel Road to R3.
Very good. That brings us to the end of the show. Any comments from the body?
I do, Mr. President. The gentleman asked about the, uh, program partner revenue as far as space allocation. Uh, just a small background, I mentioned it earlier, uh, different meetings. The Public Safety Center, uh, we received quite a bit of money for that some time back to construct that. Anytime we have corporations in the city that helps us with employees coming to the city each and every day, anytime we have departments and services, they also help folks to come in from a regional standpoint to come to your city and also spend money after the complete set of services. In that particular building alone, right, uh, that building has the Alabama Department of Forensic Unit, which they own their portion now of that building, but we also have the Alabama Department of Revenue, uh, so it's two state agencies. It's, uh, uh, three federal agencies there as well, too, have a, uh, although these individuals don't actually go to Chick-fil-A, they get transported as a federal prisoner there, uh, but also is a federal forensic and also is the National Resource Officer, is, uh, uh, corporate, uh, division there as well, too. So we have three federal agencies and also two state agencies in the city of Hoover. Also, I do want to mention everyone, too, we also have a partnership with, uh, Pella. Uh, we're able to get some funding from them and we take care of all of their, uh, bar, uh, police, their fleet, in a sense. Uh, so the more we do as a city to bring in, uh, industries and folks that come in from a regional standpoint, the better folks will spend money here. So I did, I did want to just mention that, too, as well, too, as far as that particular building footprint.
Any other comments in the body?
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, the AVI two guys don't get a lot of acclaim. I committed them when they, when they tried to do a pass on this, but this is great, the microphones are incredible, uh, they're easy to be moved around, and I'm glad I have everything back up and running in terms of, uh, of our, our viewability here and, and sound and everything for the webcast, I'm glad to see that back up and running. And thanks to Moose and his team for putting that together. Also would like to, Councilman Middlebrook, in addition to what you requested earlier for Riverwalk, I think based on the questions I'm hearing tonight, some questions that I've heard as well, they'd be beneficial to add a legal component to that. I think there's questions about the lease itself that are going to come up, and questions about the triple net lease and those kind of things, and maybe if you had the developer, the healthcare authority, and legal also all representing that to, to present, I think you'd get all your questions answered and, uh, give transparency of the community about what's going on with that building, the future of that building.
Any other comments? Very good. Any comments from the public?
Yes, sir. Paul Henry, Middlebrook. Mr. Middlebrook, do you have a, um, copy of the bar's review of this conflict of issue that if I contact you afterwards, I could get a copy of?
No, sir, I don't have a copy of it.
Do you know where I might get that or?
Contact our legal firm.
Okay, because there's, uh, I'm sorry I didn't know about it beforehand, but it just raises a lot of questions, like, there's, the city's been doing business with that building for a number of years now. Was the conflict ever brought to your attention before? Um, did the mayor know about it? It just raises a lot of questions, but I'll, I'll, uh, I'll contact Mr. Corley and ask him, but that sounds like a good way to go. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, I do just want to clarify something there, Mr. Hammerick. You don't have to come back up much, just want to, but I don't, I don't think the statement was supposed to be that the state bar reviewed the potential conflict. I think the answer that we got from legal counsel was that at the time that the work was performed, that their law firm performed the conflict check and that there was no conflict of interest under the legal ethics responsibility rules.
Thank you for that, your lawyer on the team. Thank you.
Any other comments? Very good. Thank you for your attendance, Mr. President.